Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Good evening. Mr. Rickaman? Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Present.
Mr. Vine?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mayor Benjamin?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend McDowell, you mind offering with a word of prayer?
Yes. Let us pray. For the Lord in the midst of this busy day and this busy time, you've allowed us to gather as a family. You've allowed us to gather as communities enjoined to each other. We simply ask that you might sensitize us to your will and to your way. Allow us to feel your presence. Particularly, we pray for children everywhere, for families everywhere. Particularly, when there's crisis in our nation, we pray for peace and development. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Amen. Would you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the people of West Virginia, I am here, under God, in the physical, with liberty, peace, and justice.
Thank you.
Mayor Benjamin, at this time, if you would bear with me for several changes and additions, amendments to our agenda prior to its adoption. One that I would say first, at Reverend McDowell's request as well, since I know we have several votes here for the item, withdrawing item thirty-two as requested by the applicant. This is the zoning map amendment for fourteen-hundred Hugh G Street.
And making it clear, the request for rezoning has been withdrawn.
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay.
As requested by the applicant.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay.
The rest of the amendments, please.
Additionally, we would be removing item ten from the consent agenda. We're going to amend item thirteen to read, "Council is asked to approve an agreement for park, street, streetscape, and trash storage options versus enclosure services." As requested by Columbia Water, the award to Chow and Associates in the amount of one-hundred-and-ten-thousand-six-hundred-and-ten dollars, we will be deferring consideration of item seventeen, which was a resolution regarding the operation of Soda City relocation from the fourteen-hundred block to the sixteen-hundred block of Main Street. We are withdrawing item twenty-five. And it's really more of an amendment to item twenty-five. That item twenty-five was always intended to be a restatement of your health care-related item from last meeting that got first reading. It's the actual health care motion, which now reads item twenty-six. We'll be deferring item thirty-one, which is the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen accommodations and hospitality tax grant funding recommendations.
All right. So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll move the previous question. Kirk, call a roll.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. All right, so let the record reflect, we've complied with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, sir.
Removing certain items and adding by more than two-thirds vote. For those of you who are here for the rezoning, it has been formally withdrawn. So no mass exodus right yet? Thank you Councilman for his leadership. All right, all right. All right, let's keep on moving.
Yes, sir. We would ask for any public input related to the agenda items as they were outlined. If there are none, we would ask for council, we'll go ahead and deal with the consent agenda, I'll come back to item ten.
Item eleven.
Consent agenda items eleven through sixteen.
So moved, is there a second? Is there discussion? Seeing none, we'll move the previous question. The clerk will call a roll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item ten, council is asked to approve an agreement for preliminary engineering services for the Gervais Street Bridge painting project awarded to Norfolk Southern Railway Company in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. The firm is located in Columbia.
All right.
Move approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll move the previous question. Kirk, call a roll.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor Benjamin?
No. My vote was no.
Thank you. Okay.
Ms. Vine already voted for you, so it's too late. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I will move into a period of presentations. Item eighteen is the June two thousand eighteen Employee of the Month, Mr. Well, I know Chief is not here, is it Deputy Chief Kelly?
Yeah.
Okay, Deputy Chief Melron Kelly with the Columbia Police Department will present Mr. Jeffrey Brink, Columbia Police Sergeant at the North Region.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Evening Chief.
I would like to present our June Employee of the Month, Sergeant Jeffrey Brink. Jeffrey is a sergeant over in the North Region, which is District One area. He is a ten-year veteran of the Columbia Police Department. He came to us by way of the Kalamazoo area of Michigan, moved here after college at Western Michigan State, and he's been here ever since. Dedicated employee, frequent community participant in our many activities, including driving an ice cream truck. Jeffrey's been married to his wife, Christian, and they have two daughters, Addison and Sidney, who are seated here in the audience. He's a valued state of Columbia employee and team member. I just want to take this opportunity to thank him publicly and show him our appreciation. Thank you.
But I also want to give you a little small token, you can share with your significant other, how about that?
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
Appreciate it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I want to do a little bit of a teaser. staff and some helpers are headed to Denver for our All-America City Award competition presentation. The city of Columbia, we applied for this, we had no idea how involved it was actually going to become, but it's a wonderful thing. We've been named a finalist out of twenty cities across this country. The city of Columbia is an All-America City finalist, and so we are very, very excited about the opportunity. The All-America City Awards process is the flagship program of the National Civic League. The theme this year is promoting equity through inclusive civic engagement. And on Wednesday, March twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, the National Civic League proudly announced the city of Columbia as one of the top twenty All-America City finalists. Finalists were selected through an application process that highlighted various city projects and community-based initiatives. Each finalist represents the diversity of American communities, from the largest cities to the smallest towns, from east to west and north to south. On Thursday, June twenty-first through Sunday, June twenty-fourth, a delegation from the city of Columbia will be traveling to Denver, Colorado, to participate in a live presentation. The presentation will determine whether the city of Columbia will become an All-America City winner. The All-America City Awards were established in nineteen forty-nine, and Columbia was a winner in nineteen fifty-one and nineteen sixty-four, so it's time that we bring it back again. And our public relations team will be promoting Columbia by posting on all of the city's social media platforms using the hashtag #AAC2018. They will tag the National Civic League, and we are asking our city leaders and our citizens to like and share these posts to help build momentum for our city. All-America City finalist status speaks volumes about our diverse entrepreneurial and community-focused city. Columbia epitomizes the characteristics of a city that emphasizes civic engagement, and we are so honored to be recognized and excited to, I think, participate in this very interesting live presentation that our staff and some folks that are helping us have put together. We hope to come back, because we can't give it away beforehand, and share with you all the presentation upon our return. So we wish us safe travels, and hopefully we'll bring back the All-America City Award.
Let's bring it home. Let's bring it home. I will say, Teresa, you and your staff, this process is rigorous, y'all. I had no idea how rigorous it was until they made it start working.
Right.
And Ashley and everyone else in the team have done a really fantastic job, so we're looking forward to bringing it home. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
We have City Council, we can take a photo.
Ms. Uzi would like you all to take a photo with the All-America City poster.
Can we do it before we leave?
Can they do it before they leave?
When we get back up?
Don't forget, you know, Ms. Uzi will get you.
We will do it, we will do it, so we can include it in the packet, in the packet.
Yes, absolutely.
I do want to also, are you done with the All-America City?
Yes, sir.
I want to recognize Taylor Wright, I can't see Taylor. Are you, can you stand up, stand up for a second? He's a student body president, University of South Carolina.
Awesome.
And he's a pre-med superstar, doing great things on campus, and he's looking forward to making sure we have continued great dialogue, not just between the university and the city, but also through student leadership there.
Absolutely.
So want to recognize his presence here.
Welcome, Taylor.
All right.
Our next item is the Parks and Recreation Month proclamation, the Honorable Mayor Stephen K. Benjamin.
Thank you. No, it's a pleasure to recognize this as Parks and Recreation Month, whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Columbia, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally and physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas our parks and recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the United States House of Representatives has just designated July as Parks and Rec Month, and the city of Columbia recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, I, Stephen Benjamin, Mayor of the City of Columbia, along with my fellow members of city council, do hereby proclaim July as Parks and Recreation Month. We recognize, obviously, the beautiful silver environments and built environments that make up our parks and rec, but more importantly, the men and women who make our parks and recs a special place for our children and our adults to prosper in. So when we take this picture, then we'll also take Ms. Uzi's picture, how about that? Randy, you had a word, brother? Randy Davis, our Director of Parks and Recreation, Randy?
All right, all right. I just want to take this opportunity to thank city council, the mayor, and city manager for your continued support for what we do in parks and recreation. Thank you so much.
Cedar Terrace. Cedar Terrace.
Let's get a two-point picture, y'all.
It's for Tiger, the Tiger.
This is for the kids.
Right between the big ears.
Right.
Love each other, love each other.
Slide.
This is for a slide.
We are taking this bitch when it got to him.
I was there.
Okay.
I was there.
Oh, baby.
There we go.
This is on stage.
Oh, baby.
There we go.
Y'all too much.
All right, all right.
You're making some progress, let's keep it moving.
Ah, Mr. Mayor?
Governor.
Yes, sir. We are at the introduction of Ms. Charlene Slaughter as the new Director of Communications, Mr. Bill Ellen.
Bill Ellen, Bill Ellen sounds familiar. Who's Bill Ellen?
Yeah, the President and CEO of Experience Columbia SC, who I spent the morning with. We had a great meeting.
I moved the microphone, you might want to put the microphone back up. Hey, brother, how you, man?
Hey, Mr. Mayor and all members of council, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. First, I want to thank the city of Columbia and Chief Jenkins for all your support and help last week as we hosted the state firefighters convention in Columbia. At the convention center, we had over two thousand firefighters. First time in Columbia, they've been in Merrill Beach for over forty years, so they're in Columbia, and we're negotiating with them for a contract for the next three years. So it was a great event, and thank you for all your help.
Awesome.
It was.
And now I'm here to welcome and present to you our new Director of Communications, Ms. Charlene Slaughter. And before Kelly officially introduces Charlene, she's going to give you a little update on what we're doing from a marketing standpoint, to market the city as a destination, and then Charlene's going to say a few words about how busy she's been.
Thank y'all so much. As you know, we've been marketing Columbia through our billboards, which have all of our new branding on them. We have those in Charlotte, and Augusta, and Greenville, and Charleston, all the routes leading into Columbia. We're also almost eighty thousand Facebook fans in social media, and almost twenty thousand on Instagram, so really growing our marketing all across the board. We're doing, we've done projects with Garden &amp; Gun, Southern Living, the local palette, and we've hosted travel influencers from around the world here in Columbia recently, so lots going on. But one of the main areas of focus that we're really proud of right now is our communications and media relations, and we have had Charlene on board for about three months now, and she's going to tell you a little bit about what she's working on in terms of earned media and media relations.
Hi. I'm Charlene Slaughter again, no stranger to South Carolina. I'm a proud South Carolinian, born, raised, educated, and still live in my grandparents' house I renovated, so I'm no stranger to this area. Spent the first ten years of my career as a print journalist, the next ten in higher education, marketing, and PR at Claflin University, and most recently, Dolemore School of Business. I like to cap it at twenty years, and we'll just stop there. My job at Experience Columbia SC centers around telling the Columbia story through earned media. We do that in a number of ways, but a few of those is by hosting travel writers nationally and internationally. We just had an international writer here from the Netherlands last week. We also do media immersion trips, where we go to markets where we may not be as known or where we may not have contact with certain writers, like New York, not like Atlanta, to make those connections, to tell Columbia's story, and get them interested in writing about us and that earned media piece that Kelly mentioned. I wanted to mention just a few things. We're proud of the growing amount of national coverage that we're getting from publications like The Thrillist, from National Geographic, Southern Living, Smithsonian Magazine, Garden &amp; Gun, Food &amp; Wine, Cosmopolitan, and the list goes on and on. We've garnered headlines like, you know, "American travel destinations that are about to blow up," and "The best small cities in the United States," you know, "Columbia, state-of-the-art destination," "The five best, most affordable places to travel," where we were mentioned alongside places like Aruba in Shanghai, China. You know, Columbia's Congry National Park was deemed the best place in North America to see synchronized flies, not in the south, not in the south, in North America. And if you pick up your July edition of Family Circle, you'll see one of our festivals, our Love, Peace, and Hip-Hop Festival, that's listed as one of the best family festivals in each state. So it's an exciting time to represent Columbia in this capacity. We're certainly here as a resource for you all. For example, I don't know if you heard, Mayor Benjamin was on CBS this morning recently, and we got a call from them saying we need photos from the destination and that type thing, so we're certainly here as a resource to provide anything that you need related to media relations, communications, in terms of travel and tourism. So feel free to reach out, and we look forward to continuing to take Columbia to higher heights on a national and international level. Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Thank you. Mr. Duval?
Charlene, last year, Kelly was able to get the total eclipse in August, and I'm hoping you're going to be able to get it back this time?
I'm working on it.
It was a good draw.
Thank you, guys, thank you, thank you, Bill, thank you so much. All right, to the manager.
Good looking, Erica's grandbaby on the phone, so cute. Okay, we are at our budget ordinance's second reading. Item twenty-two, ordinance number two thousand eighteen zero-two-six, to raise the revenue and adopt the budget for the city of Columbia, South Carolina.
There's a motion. So move.
Second.
It's moved to second, discussion. Seeing none, move the previous question. Kirk, call a roll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item twenty-four, ordinance number two thousand eighteen zero-two-five, amending the nineteen ninety-eight Code of Ordinances of the city of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter twenty-three, Utilities and Engineering, Article five, Water and Sewer Rates, Section twenty-three one forty-three, Water Service Rates, and Section twenty-three one forty-nine, Sewer Service Rates.
Motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Moving second, discussion. Seeing none, move the previous question. Kirk, call a roll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
Thank you.
Ordinance number two thousand eighteen zero-two-seven, amending the nineteen ninety-eight Code of Ordinances of the city of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter twenty-three, Utilities and Engineering, Article five, Water and Sewer Rates, Section twenty-three one forty-three, Water Service Rates, and Section twenty-three one forty-nine, Sewer Service Rates.
Motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Moving second, discussion. Seeing none, move the previous question. Kirk, call a roll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item twenty-four, ordinance number two thousand eighteen zero-two-five, amending the nineteen ninety-eight Code of Ordinances of the city of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter fifteen, Parks and Recreation, Section fifteen-five, User Fees, A, Definitions, three, D, Parks, three, Enzer Kenan House, four, Earlwood Community Building, and five, Eau Claire Print Building, I, Athletics.
Motion.
Move approval?
A second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move the previous question. Kirk, call a roll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
Thank you.
Ordinance number two thousand eighteen zero-two-seven, amending the nineteen ninety-eight Code of Ordinances of the city of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter twenty-three, Utilities and Engineering, Article five, Water and Sewer Rates, Section twenty-three one forty-three, Water Service Rates, and Section twenty-three one forty-nine, Sewer Service Rates.
Motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Moving second, discussion. Seeing none, move the previous question. Kirk, call a roll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
Thank you.
Ordinance number two thousand eighteen zero-two-seven, amending the nineteen ninety-eight Code of Ordinances of the city of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter twenty-three, Utilities and Engineering, Article five, Water and Sewer Rates, Section twenty-three one forty-three, Water Service Rates, and Section twenty-three one forty-nine, Sewer Service Rates.
Motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Moving second, discussion. Seeing none, move the previous question. Kirk, call a roll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item twenty-four, ordinance number two thousand eighteen zero-two-five, amending the nineteen ninety-eight Code of Ordinances of the city of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter fifteen, Parks and Recreation, Section fifteen-five, User Fees, A, Definitions, three, D, Parks, three, Enzer Kenan House, four, Earlwood Community Building, and five, Eau Claire Print Building, I, Athletics.
Motion.
Move approval?
A second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move the previous question. Kirk, call a roll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item twenty-six, Mr. Mayor, is a health care motion, as listed?
Sure, yeah, and I have a motion, and I want to make sure that we stated this clearly at the last meeting, but I want to get it on the record. We've adopted the budget, and we've made it clear that we have to maintain our DDB, and we're going to shift to the eighty-twenty split as well. Want to get, put that on the record, but as relates to plan design, and I, I'm not sure where Mrs. Benjamin is, and she's in here somewhere, she's probably behind the sign, we got a lot of work to do on plan design, and Jacob and Vic, you guys are here, and I'm sure several others here who want to have some input in that, and we're getting innumerable solicitations, people who have different ideas, it's going to be a process over whatever the horizon is, hopefully a shorter one, in which we can get everyone's input and see what we can do that's very best for our employees and for our retirees. But I wanted to get this consistent with exactly what we said last meeting, and want to get it on the record, okay? So I move that the city maintain the established defined dollar benefit contribution for pre and post-sixty-five eligible retirees and their dependents for the two thousand nineteen plan year, and approve the recommended phased-in premium adjustments for active employees resulting in a city sharing eighty percent and an active employee sharing twenty percent of the cost for health care. These changes are effective on January first, two thousand nineteen. Future plan design changes and premium adjustments may be necessary in order to maintain the eighty-twenty cost share. That is a motion. So, um, second. Moving second, discussion. And again, this is consistent with exactly what we articulated the last time, we just want to make sure it's on the record. All right, we'll move the previous question. Kirk, call a roll.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
And let's, this is, I know summers get tight and crazy, but Pam and Missy and everyone else who's tasked with this, let's, as methodically as possible, let's get all stakeholders in a room, either the same room or different rooms, let's work through this and see if there are any other ideas that we have not considered that might, in order to the benefit of our employees and retirees, in a way that makes some sense, okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Thank you.
And let me say real quick, thank you guys, CFFA, for always being actively involved, constructively in the discussion. Jacob, Vic, who's the proper contact to make sure we have that communication? So Jacob, the president of CFFA, let's make sure we dialogue.
Met with them last week.
All right, I know, I know.
They're always, always share good information. We're moving into a period of public hearing. Madam Mayor, pro tem, I will read item 27, and then you can open that. Resolution Number 2018-054, in support of the issuance by the South Carolina Jobs Economic Development Authority of its education facilities refunding revenue bonds Benedict College in one or more series taxable or tax exempt in the principal amount of not exceeding $25 million.
Okay, and so this is on our agenda for a public hearing. Is there anyone to speak for or against Resolution R. 2018-054?
To me, possibly, maybe.
Explain.
Explain to people why we're doing this, because I've had several people ask.
Okay.
Yes, sir, would you like that on the record, Mr. Rickaman?
Yes, please.
Yes, sir. I'll do my best. I mean, the city really acts, it's not even as a pass-through, it's more of a formality when, I think Benedict College is, they're not doing new projects, is my understanding, but I guess they are refinancing, is that right, Mr. Haywood?
Mr. Payton? Oh, Mr. Jones, how are you?
Oh, hello, Ray. Why don't you help us out for your client?
Evening, Council and City staff. So this resolution is a support resolution, it's required by Jeddah. So what Benedict is doing is, of course Benedict's under new leadership, Dr. Artis and her chief of staff, Dr. Seon Smith's here tonight, they're actually refinancing some debt, and so in order to do that, the Jeddah statute requires a resolution in support of the bond issuance be adopted by the locality in which the college is located, which is why we're here tonight. City has no responsibility for these bonds, the city is taking ministerial action tonight in connection with the bond issue.
Thank you, Ray.
Again, is there anybody here to speak for or against? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Removed.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Ms. Moore, would you call the roll?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Item 28 is also for a public hearing, Madam Mayor, pro tem, Resolution Number R. 2018-057, Public Input on Closing and Transfer of an Unopened Portion of Stedham Avenue, otherwise known as Brook Avenue, containing approximately .13 acres in Richland County.
Okay, and this is what Mr. Wright briefed us on, so this is just a formality, is an unopened, unused portion of a small block in the northern part of the city. Is there anybody here to speak for or against R. 2018-057? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Move approval?
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. If the clerk will call the roll?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor, pro tem, I would ask Ms. Gloria Said, Director of Community Development, to come forward to do a brief presentation prior to you opening the public hearing for the fiscal year 2018-2019 Annual Action Plan for Community Development.
Good evening, Mayor, pro tem, Divine, and members of City Council, Ms. Wilson. It's that time of year again that we present our annual plan for approval to HUD. This is our third plan under the current five-year CON plan that was approved back in 2015. We have with us today Mr. Tag Watts, who is the chairman for the Citizens Advisory Council. He's going to come forward and tell you a little bit about the process that they've gone through to vet and approve the activities that we are proposing for the coming year. So I'll ask Mr. Watts to come forward.
Thank you, Ms. Said. Thank you, Mayor, pro tem, Divine, and distinguished members of council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Want to share with you the details of the fiscal year 2018-19 Annual Action Plan. As many of you are already aware, the City of Columbia's Community Development Department has prepared the fiscal year 2018-19 Draft Annual Action Plan, which represents the fourth year of the city's 2015-2019 Consolidated Plan. The action plan is the City of Columbia's application, if you will, to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development entitlement grants, and identifies the proposed programs and projects that will be funded during the city's fiscal year of 2018. Working in collaboration with our partners, neighborhoods, and community stakeholders, the action plan identifies how the city proposes to utilize these funds to address its community development, housing, and public service priorities and goals, as described in the executive summary. On page three of your guide, you should have some recommendations for funding from CDBG Activities and HOPRA Program Awards, which were ratified by the Citizens Advisory Committee formally on March 13th, 2018. The three HUD entitlement grants are covered in the Annual Action Plan, those being CDBG Home and HOPRA Funds, and those expected resources are detailed on page 28 on your packets. The Community Development Block Grant, we have a total of $2,351,323 in CDBG revenue that's available for project activities, which represents roughly about an 8.1% increase. Out of that total, a little over $1,000,000, $1,026,764 comes from new entitlement money, another $199,650 comes from prior year entitlements, and then $650,000 comes from program income from the revolving loan fund for the anticipated fiscal year, as well as $474,909 worth of previous year's program incomes. The primary objective is the development of viable urban communities through the provision of decent, affordable housing, improved living environments, and the expansion of economic opportunity. Funds are intended to serve low and moderate income residents in areas, eliminate slum and bright, or eliminate imminent threats of health and safety due to disasters. CDBG activities included in the fiscal year 2018 address community development priority needs addressed in the Consolidated Plan, and such projects include public services, acquisition, demolition, economic development, and affordable housing. A complete listing of those activities can be found starting with page 44. Talk a little bit about the Home Investment Partnerships Program. This year we have $867,617 in revenue available for projects for this fiscal year. $617,000 comes from new entitlement money, whereas $250,000 comes from program income. And the home program is dedicated to increasing the availability as well as the access to affordable housing for low-income households. Activities include affordable new, affordable housing loans, residential acquisition, rehab, and new construction, and other projects. And then finally, the last group of money that you're looking at in front of you is the housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, in the amount of $1,406,384 for programs this coming fiscal year. HOPRA funds may be used for a wide range of housing, social services, program planning, and development costs for the benefits of individuals living with HIV and AIDS and their families that reside within the Columbia Metropolitan Square area of Calhoun, Fairfield, Kershaw, Lexington, Richland, and Saluda Counties. Project sponsors being recommended include the Columbia Housing Authority, PALS, the Cooperative Ministries, Transitions, USC, Sacahatchee, and USC here. Citizens have had the opportunity to comment during the city's comment period, which began on April 12th of this year, and was extended until June 20th of this year. Due to the delay in the HUD allocation notification, the city's Annual Action Plan submission is delayed until next week on June 26th. And in addition to tonight's public hearing, a public hearing was held on April 19th of this year at the Wood Forest Community Development and Education Center, located at 3730 North Main Street, Suite D in Columbia. The action plan, along with citizens' comments, will be submitted to the Department of Housing and Urban Development prior to June 26th, and all public comments can still be submitted to the Community Development Department located at 1225 Ladies Street, Suite 102 in Columbia, South Carolina. They can also be emailed to C-O-C, C-O-M-D-E-V, compliance@columbiaSC.net, or they can be faxed, if we're still in the 20th century, to 803-255-8912. For more information, we always encourage folks to call the Communities Development Department, which is located at, which can be reached at 803-545-3373. Before I throw it back to council for the opening of the public hearing, I do also want to take a personal privilege, and thank you, Mayor Benjamin, for being here. It's always a pleasure to present this information to you, but I really want to brag a little bit about our committee. Citizens Advisory Committee does a lot of work throughout the year. The funny thing is, we can kind of compress it down to about four months, because we're that efficient. But doing so, we couldn't be as efficient if it wasn't for the contributions of six talented committee members, which include David Jackson, Marvin Heller, Trey Taylor, Ursula Polaris, Pat Brown, and Walter Skipper Marks. And then finally, we'd also, the committee would also like to extend its thanks to the fine members of the community development staff, specifically Ms. Gloria Said, Dolly Bristow, and Andalyn Rodriguez, who work so closely with us. That is all I have to share with you today. I'll open it up to any questions you have, and we can begin the public hearing.
All right. Ms. Vine, and is this a public hearing or amendment?
Public hearing.
Both, okay. All right, Ms. Vine?
Well, first I would like to thank Mr. Watts and the committee, but Mr. Watts, you've been doing this for a long time, and we appreciate your work on this. And then the second thing I just wanted to, because I know you said a lot, so I want to just reiterate, make sure it was on the record, that for 2018-19, the City Council is reaffirming our priority areas, targeted redevelopment areas, Brooklyn Heights, King Lion Street, Farrow Road, Business Corridor, and Etta Stokort redevelopment. I just want to make sure that was reiterated.
All right. Fantastic. All right, any other comments? Anyone here to speak in favor of or against our annual action plan? All right. Thank you, Tag, and thanks not just for this, but all the work you always did to keep us on the national stage. Appreciate it, bro. All right?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Laurie, did you have something to say as well? I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
You have a motion to submit.
We're going to have a motion, I think. Is that, do we, so do we move on the annual action plan, or do we? That's 30, right?
No, sir, that's a separate item.
Separately? All right, is there a motion?
Second.
Moved in probably second. Any discussion? Move the previous question. Clerk Colorado?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Under other matters, Mr. Mayor, item 30 is a separate item, a Community Development Block Grant substantial amendment for the 2017 Annual Action Plan, and Ms. Said will also present information on that amendment.
All right, Ms. Said.
Good evening again. As you all know, we have had some challenges with the current year's action plan in terms of the approval and when we were actually funded and getting a lot of our programs up and going. So consequently, we are requesting that council approves a substantial amendment of this fiscal year 17 action plan. And that approval will include three items. We're asking that you approve us expanding from the current four areas that you just mentioned, Councilwoman Vine, to expand the four prioritized areas to redevelopment areas to the citywide areas that we can do projects in. And also, we're asking that you waive the requirement for our standardized NOFA process due to time constraints in order for us to meet our timeliness demands that have been placed on us by HUD. And we're also asking that you approve us transferring funding from our CDBG program income revolving loan fund to the CDBG regular entitlement pot, and that's so that we can use those dollars for other activities other than housing. In your folder, you also have some specific information about the request that we have before you for the substantial amendment, and it actually outlines where we're moving money from, what we've had to deobligate from certain areas or certain projects to new projects in order for us to get this money spent in a timely manner.
All right. Is there anyone, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Move the previous question. Clerk Colorado?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you, Gloria.
Thank you, Gloria.
At this time, we will move into a period of ordinances, first reading, item 33, Ordinance Number 2018-010, to Exnet Systems, Inc., its successors and assigns the right power and authority to construct, install, maintain, and operate.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question. Clerk Colorado?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item 34, Ordinance Number 2018-031, to MCI Metro Access Transmission Services Corp., its successors and assigns the right power and authority.
Is there a second?
So moved.
Any discussion? Move the previous question. Clerk Colorado?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item 35, Ordinance Number 2018-029, amending Ordinance 2015-034, granting an encroachment to the University of South Carolina for the use of the right-of-way areas of 1,100 blocks.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, move the previous question. Clerk Colorado, thank you.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item 36, Ordinance Number 2018-033, granting an encroachment to Jeremy Long for installation and maintenance of a landscaping and a concrete walkway within the right-of-way area of the 2,700 block of Wilmont Avenue.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move the previous question. Clerk Colorado?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Moving into a period of resolutions, item 37, Resolution Number R. 2018-052, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease between the City of Columbia and TN Development Corporation for the lease of approximately 13 acres.
Ms. McDowell has a motion, second by Mr. Rickaman. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, move the previous question. Clerk Colorado?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item 38, Resolution Number R. 2018-055, authorizing acceptance and dedication of streets known as a portion of Allen's Mill Drive, Beardmore Court, Calabash Lane, Peppercorn Lane, and a portion of Sorrel Tree Drive and Allen's Mill subdivision, Phase 1.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move the previous question. Clerk Colorado?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Item thirty-nine, resolution number R-two thousand eighteen zero five six, authorizing acceptance and dedication of portions of streets known as Allen's Mill Drive and Sorrel Tree Drive and Allen's Mill subdivision, phase two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move the previous question, Clark Colerole?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item forty, resolution number R-two thousand eighteen zero six one, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement between the City of Columbia and the United Way of the Midlands for the regional coordination of homeless services in the Midlands for FY-two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
Is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move the previous question, Clark Colerole?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item forty-one, resolution number R-two thousand eighteen zero six two, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services contract for the housing first program between the City of Columbia and the University of South Carolina.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Move, approve them.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move the previous question, Clark Colerole?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item forty-two, resolution number R-two thousand eighteen zero six five, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Columbia and the Midlands Housing Alliance, Inc., for twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move the previous question, Clark Colerole?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item forty-three, resolution number R-two thousand eighteen zero six six, authorizing the city manager to execute an inclement weather center agreement between the City of Columbia and the United Way of the Midlands for the operation of the inclement weather center.
Move, approve them.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move the previous question, Clark Colerole?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
I'm the city manager. Let's make sure we have hard copies and electronic copies of all the presentations from earlier today. We had some great presentations from our partners. We're delivering frontline services to the homeless. She had some concerns that council and our staff and our other partners have about making sure we step up our effort with some of our folks who are chronically homeless, particularly several who may be dealing with some mental health issues. And it's making sure we redouble our efforts in a thoughtful and compassionate way. So just want to make sure those are, those presentations are made available broadly. Thank you. All right. Appointments.
The first is item forty-four. Council is asked to approve the appointment of two individuals to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Now, Ms. Felton is here if you need any assistance.
Well, I need to get some candidates.
Well, I like Jenna Stevens. I'd like to move the approval of Jenna Stevens for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I have a District Four seat this open.
Hold on to that one. Let's move.
So move one, and then we'll hold the second.
Move the appointment of Jenna Stevens and hold the other one. Mr. Rickaman will source some candidates for District Four. All right. Is there a second? A motion, we'll move it by Ms., I mean, as in a motion second. A motion by Ms. Devine, I'll second that motion. Move the approval of appointment of Jenna Stevens to the BOZA?
Move the previous question, Clark Colerole?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis? Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we not gonna adopt the second one?
Mr. Rickaman would like to see.
Shanique, what does the breakdown of the BOZA look like? Mr. Davis wants that vacancy in District One, Mr. Rickaman, y'all can talk about that. He wants to put a Clemson guy on there, so.
Well, District Four, my guy can't serve, so.
Okay, I know he can't serve, but.
District One has one, District Two, one, District Three, three, District Four, two, but you have one that cannot serve anymore and none outside. It's the current makeup.
We do have representation in all four districts right now.
We do.
Okay.
Yes.
These are not District Pacific seats.
No, no, they're not. They're not.
Yeah, but we want to make sure that we have citywide representation.
Yeah. Geographic distribution.
I'd like to move approval of George Schaefer.
For what seat?
The other slot. There's only one on the slot.
There's two spots.
The only currently two slots available at this time.
One slot.
Well, one, because we.
Yeah, we have one slot left. I'd like to move the approval of George Schaefer.
Who's the current District Four rep, do you know? Is that, is that?
That's a big spot.
So Cal is the only District Four rep?
Right.
Okay.
And he's coming off, so.
So you need, you need a District Four rep?
Yep.
No, but she was saying that there was.
You said there were two from District Four and one coming off.
You said, will you take the next one?
Um, Charles Sally?
Chuck is coming off?
No. No, he's the one, and he represents, and he's District Four.
Oh, so, oh, so they is a District Four.
That's not on my list.
No, the list that you have is.
She doesn't have incumbents on there at all. So Chuck, Chuck's still there?
He is.
And so for future, Shanique, when we do the appointments, if you could give us like the current ones as well, and then that way we can always see the makeup when we're trying to figure out who would be, we good.
Daniel, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, all right. So Mr. Duval and Mr. Davis have nominated Mr. Schaefer. All right. Moved by him and seconded by him. Any further discussion? Seeing none? We'll move the nomination of Mr. Schaefer for BOZA. Move the previous question? Move the previous question?
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. We have DDRC next. We have three great applicants for three slots. They fit right into them, two reappointments. And Mr. Young, Mr. Young is a new appointee. Has he served previously, or has he served with DDRC?
He's serving on a different board.
Different board, okay. But the code requires one individual from, as a Realtor, and two, one serving as an architect and the other as a community representative. So I'd move forward the names of Paul Bocknight, Tom Savery, and Preston Young.
Second.
Is it moved and seconded? Any discussion? Community. All right. Any discussion? Yeah, so, and so recognizing Mr. Bocknight and Mr. Savery will be serving his second terms and Mr. Young his initial term. With the previous question, as a motion, there was a second somewhere, right? A second here. With the previous question, I'm sorry. I thought so too. It was one of the boards, I'm not sure which.
There's no District Two rep on there, is there?
Uh, one and three.
All I see is, is one and three and one, four.
And he's four.
Yeah, Bob Nguyen serving out of District Two.
Who's in two?
Currently serving.
Who's that?
Bob Nguyen.
Who's District Four? Who's who? The.
Yeah. So three has three, one has three, and two and four have one. That's not representative of the city.
The challenge is, well, the challenge is that we have geographic representation, but we also have subject meta expertise requirements as well. So.
I think Preston Young, isn't he in District Four?
He is, yeah, he's four.
He lives in District Four.
Preston's in my neighborhood. I'm one of your constituents, Daniel.
Can we defer that until?
Yeah, your wife calls me to get things done.
She does.
Did not sound right.
Mr. Mayor.
That didn't come out right.
I know, it didn't come out.
Mr. Mayor, could we defer DDRRC appointments until next time? So that we can get adequate representation on all throughout the district? Do the two reappointments and save the third one? Yes, sir.
All right.
Can we do that?
Is that what happens? There's no District Two appointment on here, is that what happens?
Is that what's going? Where are we, where are we now with the District reps?
Who else do we have on the?
Your current makeup is?
Three, two.
You have three in District One. You have one in District Two.
Who's your District Two rep?
Who's he?
Bob Nguyen is District Two. In District Three, you have four representations. I mean, I'm saying four because Ryan Hyler is vacant, so that is a District seat.
And District Four?
District Four, you only have one.
Tell us again, because remember, DDRRC again is also occupation and subject matter specific. So if you go, if you move forward with the two reappointments, the two reappointments are filling which?
They are filling the architect.
Architect.
And community rep.
And community rep. So the only one available is?
Is the Realtor.
Is the Realtor. And so.
You can hold it if you choose to.
And District, and District Four is currently, who's the one person, District Four, who's that?
Harris Coen.
Harris Coen, right.
He's a real estate, so that puts two real estate. Well, that puts three.
He's more a contractor. He's a developer, but Preston Young is Realtor, and he's in District Four.
How do you want to do it? I think Preston's an excellent appointment. He's served on Land use boards before. I'm trying to remember which board he's served on in the past. But if you want, if we, I think we should move forward with the two reappointments. They're both stellar appointees. You know, Paul Bocknight is current, a past president of Cotton Town.
I understand, then.
And Mr. Savery. Tom's actually just inducted into the AIA Fellows. So he's, he's one of the best architects in the country right now. So if you want to hold on District Four, I'm fine. If you want to move forward, I'm fine as well. Whatever you want to do.
But we can hold it, it's just, well, y'all got to decide if it's going to be four or two, and just know that it has to be a Realtor.
Well, I mean, to be honest, I think it would be beneficial to have somebody from two since the majority of the issues that come forward are in the central city.
Well, let's move forward, let's move forward with the two reappointments. Y'all talk about the others. I think Preston's an excellent appointee.
That'd be great.
But if geographical considerations or something, y'all can figure out, y'all figure out between the now.
Just making sure that everybody's included.
Move the advancement of Mr. Bocknight and Mr. Savery. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Clark, please call the row.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis? Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. Thank you, Shanique. All right. Any items taken up in work session that require my consideration, Madam City Manager? Any, I'm sorry, Ms. Devine?
Well, I was going to say that we did discuss an executive session, the speed humps on Wacoma, and I know that we have several people here to speak to address council on that.
Oh, absolutely. And we have, yes, we have at least four or five people who signed up to speak. So I can start going down the list, but there are no committee reports or referrals, are there? All right. All right, seeing none, I'll go in the order of those who have signed up. Ms. Sarah Schwebel? Schwebel? Hey, Sarah, if I destroyed your last name, you can correct me, okay?
Fine, thank you. Good evening. Yes, I wanted to address the issue. I know that this was previously discussed at length and voted upon in city council, so I'm a little bit confused about why the item is up for discussion again. But I want to speak briefly about the situation on Wacoma Avenue. Wacoma is a street that houses AC Moore Elementary School. It's situated between Edisto Avenue and Hardin Street. Right now, Edisto Avenue has speed bumps and Hardin Street has a traffic light. And so we are seeing a large uptick in very high-speed traffic. As I know council members are aware, there was a traffic study completed within a year ago showing alarming speeds over sixty miles an hour on a twenty-five mile an hour road that also contains an elementary school. There are sidewalks on part of the street, but not on all. There are a number of families who live on the street with small children, a number of children in the neighborhood who walk to and from school on that street. Again, there is high-speed traffic has been marked in the traffic study, both in the afternoon, when children are walking to and from school, and lately at night, when many of the college-age students who live on our streets are walking to and from Five Points. As a resident of the street, I'm deeply concerned that there's going to be a tragic accident if we don't take definitive action to slow down the speed of traffic. Thank you for your consideration of the issue.
Sarah, say your last name for the record.
Schwebel.
Schwebel, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Timothy Stewart?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity. I've been living on Wacoma for about twenty-four years now as a homeowner there. Sarah took almost everything that I had planned to say. There is one thing. For the first ten or so years that we were there, the situation continued to get worse with traffic, with students, with St. Patrick's Day. The last ten years, things have improved a good bit, thanks to the city, thanks to USC, thanks to the Wales Garden Neighborhood Association, thanks to our street representative. But there is still a real issue with cars going through there too fast. There are small children, the sidewalks are only partway, and the ones at the upper end but directly onto the street, there's no green space there at all. So I believe it would, it's a very dangerous situation, and lots of cars have been hit in that area. And I think that the speed humps would do a marvelous job of slowing things down.
Thank you very much. Ms. Judy Holliday?
Hi. I'm Judy Holliday, and I live on Wacoma and have for thirty-two years. I'm the street representative and have been for seventeen. I'd had no idea this was going on on Wacoma. We had the two thousand and seventeen meeting of the Wacoma Neighborhood Association, Wales Garden Neighborhood Association. And one of the ladies stood up and said that she had had a traffic report done. And she told, for the first time we heard about all this speeding on Wacoma Avenue. And since the discussion got busy and there had already been a two-hour meeting, one of the neighbors stood up and said, let's postpone this. And why don't you go back with your street on Wacoma, get a consensus, and bring it back to the neighborhood board? And then we will look at your plan and see if we want to recommend to the city or not whether there should be speed bumps. And that's the last I knew for a year. Then I saw that there was a, an announcement that there were four speed bumps to go in on Wacoma Avenue in March of two thousand eighteen. And come to find out, when I called Mr. Duval, he looked it up for me and said that there And come to find out, when I called Mr. DeValle, he looked it up for me and said that there had been a proposal and that it was on the agenda, and that if I need, and I tried to talk to the city manager, but she was on leave, so I talked to Jeff Palin, and he gave me Mr. Brewer's number. And he is the traffic engineer, so I asked him to explain to me how this got on the agenda without my knowledge. And he said that Sarah Schwebel had represented herself as a representative of our neighborhood association and had said that approval had been given for speed bumps to be examined and for the tests to be done. So I told him that was not true. And I called Mr. DeValle back, and he verified with the neighborhood association that that had not occurred, approval had not occurred. So it was taken from the agenda. Then, we had a neighborhood election because we have a neighborhood, I mean, we have a, yes, Wales Garden Neighborhood Association annual meeting. And at that annual meeting, no representatives came talking about speed bumps. So, nothing was said. There was an election. And come to find out, without my knowledge, there had been a reassignment of the speed bump project on the agenda for a city council. And I went, does that mean I have to stop?
Yes, ma'am. Let me three minutes up. You can finish it.
Okay. And so, I feel, I know that there is supposed to be consensus, that's what the traffic engineering protocol is. And right now, I feel divided. And apparently, there was a petition of the 11 people on our street. One said, "No, we were, we were completely excluded from this process." And so, there was no discussion, in my opinion. And then, one lady, who's elderly, was left out. But we have a small amount of, we have about 11 owner-occupied residents on Waukamau. The rest are rentals. And we've made great improvements. Ms. Schwebel and I have worked with parking and gotten limited parking for our street, which has made a wonderful improvement. And so, I'm very disappointed in the fact that we cannot have consensus. And I feel bad on the street that we're going to have to go over these four humps when we haven't even seen, we just now saw the pictures of them, and we didn't know that it was coming.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Holliday.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I just address a couple of things? I want to make sure that it's clear, Ms. Holliday. Ms. Schwebel never indicated that she represented the neighborhood. She and several moms who live on the street came, they actually contacted me as one of their at-large representatives with the concern and that, and I think, and Sarah, I hope that you all can talk. It sounds like in the past, y'all have worked together, so hopefully, y'all could talk. But she has provided information on the petition. We do have the traffic study that our staff has done.
I have no idea who's on the petition. So how do you know that those are the residents?
Well, but still, as a resident of that, she contacted us, and this council heard the concerns. Mr. DeValle did tell-
But that is not the protocol, Ms. Devine.
Well, as a representative-
That is not the protocol of this traffic engineering department.
Ms. Holliday, I don't want to argue with you. As a representative of the community, any person, whether they're a member of the neighborhood association or not, has a right to contact any of their elected members and bring it forward to this council. And so, that is what was done.
But you know, but do you know who told me that she represented herself to him as a neighborhood representative was David Brewer?
Well, I'm telling you, and it's on the record, what she represented here in front of this council was that she was a resident of Waukamau. So it was-
She is a resident.
Okay, and that's what she represented. So I just want it clear that she did not misrepresent herself.
But she was not the neighborhood representative.
That's not what she told us. That's not what she told us. So I don't want to argue with you. I just want to make sure that it's clear.
I'm talking about the association.
I understand that. Now, what I'm telling you is that what she represented to this council, when a majority of this council voted for the speed bump, was not that she represented the neighborhood. She actually very clearly said that the neighborhood association had not taken a position that it was on the 2017 agenda, that it wasn't voted on, and that it was supposed to come back, and it was not on the new agenda. So she was very clear. Regardless of how we got here, I think that it is important that you guys talk. From my standpoint, and I can only speak for myself, I'm concerned that you've got elementary school students walking down there, and independent of anybody who lives in the neighborhood, our city staff has looked at it and said that people speed 60 miles an hour down that road. So that is a concern.
We have not, we have not had a chance to hear the traffic report, but when I asked Mr. Brewer about it, he said that it was moderate traffic, and it was five miles over 30 miles an hour, and 90% was five miles over, and 5% was five miles under 30 miles.
Well, and that's what I was going to say. If she's not seen it, then David, I would suggest that you share it with them. But our staff recommended, and, well, David, is he still here?
I watched the video on YouTube because I was unaware of what happened on March 20th, and I saw that Mr. DeValle said to Mr. Brewer, "Did you get neighborhood approval from Wales Garden?" And he said, "No."
Correct.
And Mr. DeValle said, "I recommend that we postpone this until we find out more about it." And you said, "No, I think they can't have a meeting for another year, and they don't have to wait a year. We're going to have it right now." And you voted right then.
Thank you.
And we all, and four members, and four members supported that. Yes, ma'am.
And we support that vote. I think it's the right thing to do.
Yeah. But how about this? We're not, we're actually not taking up an item right now. This is community input. Mr. Adams has the microphone now. Frank, please, I think you've signed up to speak. And if anyone else wants to speak on this issue, you have, you can certainly sign up. Just make sure you speak.
Good evening. Everybody smile, okay? Let's have a little, take a deep breath. I'm Frank Adams, a longtime resident of Wales Garden.
And thank you, Ms. Holliday. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm a past officer in our Wales Garden Neighborhood Association. I'm a taxpayer, a voter, a, you know, I support the city financially and otherwise. I'm here tonight to, let's diffuse this, okay? I think what we got to do, I had an office for years in the State House, and some of the, that expertise has rubbed off on me. Sometimes, when you get a situation like this, you really need to kick back and look for a win-win. And I'd like to say, hey, what's the hurry here? We got time for the neighborhood association to meet, hear these people out, maybe even receive a copy of the city's work with the traffic engineering, which has never been provided. And if we just take 30, 90 days to wait, we can still do this before school starts. But here's the thing. The big issue is, why are we concerned about children in the street? And I'll tell you why, because the sidewalks are impassable. Maybe we're looking at the, we're all frustrated, but looking at wrong parts of the problem, right? But there are areas of Waukamau in our neighborhood which are covered with dirt that has eroded from yards, that has been there, that even have shrubs growing out of them. There's parts that are broken. This is a new thing going on in our neighborhood where we are having children again. We have three sets of baby scooters right now on Etta Stowe. That's a first. So we're starting to talk to people. Hey, we got to fix these sidewalks. Mothers should not have their children in the street, except to cross from one point to another. If you're using the street to take your children to school, it's primarily, I would think, because the sidewalks are impassable. Sidewalks are for walking. Streets are for driving. Maybe we need, can we take a few weeks of this whole process? I'm asking you to follow your process. The process was a win-win for city council. The neighborhood associations always had to fight it out, and all we had to do was send you something for y'all to ratify. You didn't pick a winner, you didn't pick a loser, you just signed on to what we had worked out. It may be, we may not be able to work something out. It may be, may be that we can. Etta Stowe does have speed bumps. It took us six months of hard wrangling and going door-to-door and talking to each other and, well, politicking. Y'all ever heard of that? So I'm asking you today, let's, what's the hurry? We need time to communicate. That's not going. And I guarantee you, we can have a neighborhood meeting to address this. All it takes is 20 signatures. We've had three meetings in the last year, counting the two annual meetings and one in December. So we do meet, and I guarantee you, I'll be the first of two to sign a petition as soon as we get these issues resolved. But you've got to have more than a he said, she said, more than, I mean, let's have some black and white, and let's have some numbers, and some, some of the city expertise maybe can be brought to bear. I'd be glad to work with anybody your city manager wants to sign to me or ask, or forces her staff to work with me, Mr. Mayor. But we can, we can identify some issues, and maybe we can solve this problem, and it won't be a problem. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Thank you.
Sir?
Thank you, Mayor, member of the council. My name is Michael Anzelmo. I'm the current president of the Wales Garden Neighborhood Association. I took office in May, March of 2018.
Michael, that's A-N-S-L-E-M, A-N-
Z-E-L-M-O. Good Italian name.
All right. Good deal. Thank you.
As I've learned, and as the council's aware, this is a divided issue in our neighborhood. I echo Frank's thought to bring some reflection and thought in our neighborhood to this. The city intentionally put together the plan, the traffic control plan, that requires neighborhood association involvement, have the plan come to us, have it have a consensus. Then we come back with a recommendation to avoid this exact type of situation we're dealing with right now. And as president, I have the ability with my board to call a neighborhood meeting anytime we need to. I will pledge to this council, we'll have it within 30 days. We'll invite members of the city, we'll look at the traffic study, and come back with a recommendation for you, other than having to pursue it in another avenue perhaps, that nobody really wants to go down, because frankly, the policies, our policies weren't followed, nor were the city's policies followed at this time. I can pledge, we will look at it and be back to you within 30 days with an answer. I think that is probably the preferred course of action for everybody. It would help alleviate some tensions in my organization, and it will allow us all to really understand the facts, to review the report. I've glanced at it. Obviously, there is some incidence of high rates of speed. There are. But the vast majority of them are, in fact, within five miles an hour of the speed limit either way. I think if our neighborhood had the ability to talk through this, we could come to you with a reasoned plan and allow this issue to be taken off your plate. That's all we ask.
Thanks, Ms. Anzelmo.
Sure.
And so, have you guys seen the traffic study or not seen the traffic study?
I saw it today for the first time.
You saw it today, okay. So it is in the public domain? If not, let's, I mean, let's, let's make sure it is. And thank you, Ms. Anzelmo. Make sure you have your contact information as well. All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on this issue? Although, it's just, this is community input, obviously, so I want to kind of restate for the record, there is no item on the agenda tonight here, but please.
Hi, my name is Andrew Greitak. I'm a resident at, on Waukamau Ave. I wanted to say first, I was one of the people who helped go door-to-door and collect signatures in support of the speed bumps. We have a considerable representation from owners on the street. My children use the street. I have three young boys. They, they may use the sidewalks, but also they would like to bike around, at least until they're 15. And when biking, they use the street. So that, and I bike, and I use the street, and I, the speed that people drive there is frequently unsafe. It's not the most cars, it's the, it's the dangerous cars that cause the problem. Also, one of the speed bumps has actually already been installed. It's in front of my house. It's really very mild. It does not, I don't, it could not possibly impede emergency vehicles. I don't hear suspension creaking in the night when people go over it. So I think that the plan seems to work. So I speak in support of this, and also-
I'm Rachel Edwards. I live next to Mr. Greitak, Greitak, and-
Rachel, Ms. Edwards, would you come to the microphone?
The speed bump is in front of my house, and I love it. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old, and although I don't let him play in the street, if you know toddlers, you know their movements are unpredictable. And the speed bump has slowed down traffic significantly, and I feel like my child is safer, and I thank you for voting on it and making it go in quickly, because the summertime is when kids play outside in the street. That's when it's going to happen, if it's going to happen.
Thank you. Thank you, Anzelmo.
I appreciate the efforts of the Wales Garden Neighborhood Association in improving the neighborhood. However, the announcements of the meetings are not always comprehensive. There's times that go by where, you know, I don't receive a notification, and new owners on the, on the street don't necessarily receive those as well. So I think if it's going to be, if it's going to be describing itself as speaking and is representative of the owners on the street, it needs to be more proactive in getting that representation. I think we all have the privilege and right to talk to our city council members. Thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Greitak. Ms. Edwards? Would you, would both of you please sign on, sign on to the list so we'll have your contact information? Yes, ma'am?
We're going to wrap this up. I think Sarah wanted one more, very quickly, so we can, we can wrap this part up.
Thank you again to, to council and everyone in the room who is patiently waiting through this conversation. Just really, I want to explain one other piece. The neighborhood association meeting was, was, was highly complicated. The initial meeting, the issue was brought up, there was support, there was an objection raised, and the neighborhood street residents were told to go back and, and address the problem, discussing and, and work towards consensus. And so, the route going, working directly with council representatives actually enabled us to move forward towards a vote. There was more than a year's work to move towards this vote, speaking back to Frank Adams' comments about, about Etta Stowe. And the minutes for the, the requirements for the Wales Garden require that the meeting be held at a certain time each year. It's actually written into the board minutes, and it is scheduled during the spring break, flank, sorry, it's scheduled during the, the weekend flanking USC spring break. So, most of the owner-occupied residents living on Waukamau Avenue are employed by USC and out of town during the one meeting a year that is held.
Sarah, I don't want to interrupt you, but-
Not at all.
I think we, we, we don't, however we got here, we just probably need to put some of that aside. Your president has committed to have a meeting within the next 30 days. Everyone who is here, you all need to exchange information. And if maybe also those of you who went door-to-door in Waukamau can make sure that the meeting, that there's representatives at that meeting. If we can also make sure that it is set at a time that is reasonable for people to be there. It is summer, and people will do vacations, and we know we can't plan around everybody, but it's important that we get this, this issue resolved. I do want to say, and as I just shared with Mr. DeValle, and I've been here long enough to see it, that even when there are neighborhoods that are split and things come up, ultimately, the decision to put or not put speed bumps is up to council. It does not, I mean, we don't have to have the neighborhood, although we put it in a policy, and we put that policy to calve this consensus and have people discussing, but it doesn't say that we cannot vote for speed bumps if a neighborhood is against it and vice versa, especially if our professional staff recommends something. So I want people to be clear on that. But what I would like to do is, when you guys have the meeting, if you can make sure that Mr. DeValle and I, at least the two of us, know, so that we can be present if our schedules permit, David Brewer will be there, and we'll make sure that we have the information. Are you, what? You want to be there, too?
No.
Oh. And make sure we all know.
I don't need that speed, man.
But, you know, I, this council, and I just want, it just has to be clear, this council knew that there was, there was some people in the neighborhood who did not want the speed bumps. And we heard the information. We clearly did not get any misrepresentation about who was representing the neighborhood association. We heard from residents of that, of that street, and a majority of this council felt we needed to move forward. But we do want to encourage you guys to work together, so we'll give you guys that 30 days. You have our promise that after the meeting, and if you have the meeting within two weeks, we can still move forward quickly after that. But we'll move forward one way or another quickly after that, but we would ask that you guys go back and have that discussion.
I greatly appreciate that. I think it's important for us to have conversation and also recognize that, you know, that the city traffic engineer saw the results of the traffic study and recommended some traffic calming measures as being essential. I just, I want to reiterate again how concerned I am about the safety of those walking and using the street.
I am too. We are too, and we'll, we'll have that addressed, but we want to make sure everybody has some input.
Absolutely. Thank you again.
So, thank you. Frank, did you, did you want to say something else? Ms. Anzelmo says you don't want to say anything else. Ms. Anzelmo says Mr. Adams don't want to say anything else, and I'm going to trust Ms. Anzelmo on this one. But please, you guys, obviously, we're your representatives. Feel free to dialogue with us and share your thoughts with us. My understanding is it is a sense of council that you all, Ms. Anzelmo, put your comments. You will broadly make sure every voice is heard at a meeting in which even those who may not routinely receive communications are, are included. I think it probably is also, want to be very clear, that the council has made its decision. If, in fact, we choose to reverse that decision, that's going to be based on conversations that you all have between now and then. I understand our staff will probably cease and desist until we hear back, but the plan is to still move forward with the speed bumps, unless you all come back to us with some other type of, 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 of a decision that helps inform us in a different, in a different way. So-
Who will notify us of the meeting?
We're going to rely on Ms. Anzelmo and Ms. Schwebel and others. I think, I don't think there'll be any, any shortage of communicates. I would strongly encourage, however, that while we are your elected representatives, should I say something to you? I think, I think the communications should probably be centralized and go straight to the city manager or whoever you designate, you have a preferred designee.
I've shared Mr. Anzelmo's information with our Public Works Director, Robert Anderson.
My guess is, my guess is there are a whole lot of well-meaning but differing opinions right here, so should everything-
Because I assumed that he would be, charge would set in the meeting.
But my, but my guess is not just the meeting, I'm saying any other, my, it's going to be so important. You guys, feel free to take copies of names and email addresses here. We got to make sure everyone is, is contacted and has an opportunity to have their voices heard. So if you have communications, should they email you or Robert?
Robert.
I figured you'd say Robert. Mr. Anderson, for those who may be listening and unable to attend, RAAnderson@columbiaSC.net. If you have a position on the speed bumps on Waukamau and Wales Garden, please share those thoughts with him. Please make sure our staff, Mr. Brewer and Mr. Anderson are fully involved in whatever this meeting is. Let's make sure that the document, the traffic study, is, is in the public domain, as it is public information. And we're done with that one for right, for right now. I thought we were. Mr. McDowell?
Mr. Mayor, if the 30-day, if after 30 days there has been not a reasonable conclusion to this situation, does that simply mean that the decision that has been made by council stands?
My sense, oh, my sense is, it's, 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 it's at our attention, so Madam City Manager, you just need to report back to us exactly where things are, and we'll take it from there. Okay?
All right.
All right, as opposed to some type of a silent trigger. All right? Thank you all. All right. Ms., Ms. Ursula Polaris? Ms. Regina E. Wims?
Hello. Good afternoon. Last night, I had the unfortunate opportunity to assist in locating the next of kin for a community resident and a former educator, a quiet woman who minded her own business. After locating her brother to see a six-foot-four man rock to his knees because his only sibling was now in a body bag, this was very unsettling.
Sorry, I didn't understand what you said.
He didn't hear the last, he didn't hear the last sentence you said. This was very-
This was very unsettling. He kept saying that he kept trying to tell his sister to move from that neighborhood because it was becoming dangerous. But she loved where she lived. She loved the house that she lived in. Her father was an artisan who helped to hand-lay the stones that created the house. This was the fourth suspicious fire in four- This was the fourth suspicious fire in four weeks in the Brooklyn Washington Heights neighborhood. The difference is, this last suspicious fire had a death attached to it. I don't know who's benefiting from these fires. I know that once the fire occurs, the houses are razed, and you have the land. I don't know. What I do know is that I'd like to request a lighting study for our neighborhood. And before I go any further, I have Mr. Reginald Garrett with me from the neighborhood, and his family has been in our neighborhood for 45 years. So, and we are getting ready to work with Dr. Donaldson this coming Thursday regarding the historic preservation of the neighborhood. Did you know at one time, we had our own council, our own mayor? And we want this to stay a part of our history. But we are positioned to be on the positive side of change. So to help us, we'd like a lighting study. We would also like cameras, a camera study, not just on the exterior along the Belt Line and Farrell Road corridor, but on the interior. Someone is moving in the darkness of our neighborhood, and we need help. If you could do this for us, we would be forever grateful. Another thing that would help us is to come through and board up the houses that are not boarded. The ones that you're trying to reach, the families, the absentee landlords, the houses remain unboarded, therefore remaining a nuisance or a possible nuisance. If you could help us with that, we would appreciate that also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wims.
Regina, I would say, and I shared this with the city manager, Mr. Davis earlier, about Sarah Willingham. That's a huge loss to our community.
Huge loss, yes.
And we will certainly, you know, law enforcement, fire department will, will be looking into everything surrounding that.
I was out there last night from the time they called until they roped it off to escalate the importance of it. So we're very thankful for the work that the City of Columbia Fire Department did, the Police Department. We're just very thankful.
Thank you, Regina. Thank you so much. All right. No one's assigned to speak? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. With the previous question, Kirk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Oh, aye, sorry.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Have a good evening.